Each and every council meeting. Roll call, and like we said, there are other council members on the phone and that's where they will do their roll call vote. Ms. Lee's.
Mr. Eyre. Mr. Boyce. Davis.
President.
Mr. O'Connor. Mr. Peterson.
Here. Here.
Mr. Schwartz. Smith. Ms. Wiles. Mr. Hampton.
Here.
President, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lee's. Moving on to the approval of minutes from the March tenth, 2020 meeting. We need a motion to approve in a second.
President, I would, this Darren, I would move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. This will have to be a roll call vote because of the phones, approval of the minutes. Ms. Lee's.
Mr. Boyce. Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor. Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz. Mr. Smith. Ms. Wiles. Mr. Eyre. Hampton.
Aye.
Minutes are approved.
Thank you, Ms. Lee's, and thank you, council. Approval of tonight's agenda.
Minutes of the special session.
I'm sorry, this one.
We still have another minutes to.
Approval of the minutes for the March fourteenth, 2020 special session.
Darren, I move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. This again will be a roll call vote. Ms. Lee's.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor. Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Schwartz. Mr. Smith. Wiles. Mr. Eyre. Boyce.
Aye.
Mr. Hampton.
Aye.
Minutes are approved.
Thank you. And now to the approval of tonight's agenda.
President, this is Darren, I would move to approve.
Mark on the phone made a motion. Oh, Mark's second, I'm sorry. Mr. Peterson and then Mr. Boyce. They have the motion to approve in the second. This is another roll call vote. Ms. Lee's.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor. Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz. Smith. Ms. Wiles. Mr. Eyre. Boyce. Hampton.
Aye.
The agenda is approved.
Thank you, Ms. Lee's, and thank you, everyone, for this maybe once in a lifetime event, doing all these by roll call. Appreciate everyone hanging tight with us. Moving to petitions or comments by citizens who are present. I do not have any in front of me. If anyone wants to have a question, please bring it to Ms. Lee's throughout this evening. And Mayor Jensen, I believe you have a comment or two you'd like to make. Mr. Jensen, Mayor Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Sorry. Members of the council, I'll stand up here, and I would advise anyone presenting tonight to do the same. I think it's easier to hear phone and to the public. I want to start by thanking each and every one of you on the council for being so receptive and compassionate these last ten or so days to the work we've done here at City Hall. It takes all of us within city leadership, and that certainly includes you, to help us to maintain our social distance and combat this horrible virus that's in our country. I also appreciate Clerk Lee's and the team tonight for continuing to maintain transparency. I know Mr. Hampton and I discussed that at length about the importance of that, the importance to continue to conduct city business moving forward. I also would like to thank our internal staff, as you can imagine, the last ten days, as it has been for so many, somewhat of a fire drill of trying to sort through not only how we communicate to the public and reiterate that our utmost priority is their health and safety, but also the priority for us has been the health and safety of the 450 employees that work for the City of Noblesville. And I know that you all share in that commitment as well. So we have worked through different levels of HR and different guidance that the state has given us. Our goal all along has been to adhere to the guidance of the health, the public health officials at the federal, state, and local level. I think we've done a good job receiving their information and relaying that to the public. Last week, you recall, we were forced into, we moved towards an executive order that helped basically close public spaces, public buildings in the City of Noblesville to emergency and essential personnel only. That was done out of an abundance of caution to keep our workers, both in City Hall but also in the Public Safety Building, the police station, and fire stations all across the city, safe. As we know, as this begins to unfold over the next several weeks, they will be on the front lines. Today, as of yesterday, when the governor elevated the stay-at-home policy that will take effect tonight at 11:59 PM, that caused us to move to a heightened degree of security starting tonight as well. We have moved, as of tomorrow morning, to have most of our employees working remotely. About seventy-five percent of our employees, and that excludes the essential police and fire. I want to reiterate to you, the council, and to the public, that our public safety officials are on duty and actively working tirelessly as they do to keep the City of Noblesville safe. The governor's order also calls out individual departments such as Public Works. So are utilities, we have to maintain that our toilets are flushing, so they will be considered essential, as well as some street department, as well as some parks maintenance folks as well. So we have done that, and kudos to Holly Ramone, and Matt Light, and Lindsey Bennett, and a whole host of folks who have helped us guide our way through those employee decisions that were not easy to make and obviously were a little bit new, not, I think, for any administration, especially one that's eighty-five days in. So I think we have made do and done a great job.
Mr. Mayor. Moving to council committee reports, I think we only have one. Mr. O'Connor. Okay, thank you, Mr. O'Connor. Would you need a motion to approve? Yes, sir. Mr. Eyre. Oh, I'm sorry. Repeat yourself, sorry, Mr. Eyre, Mr. Eyre, just hold on just a second, I'm talking over you. So go ahead, Mr. Eyre.
The next Roads Committee meeting is canceled.
Oh, the Roads Committee meeting is canceled for next week.
Okay, which is first Friday of every month. The next one is canceled in April. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Eyre. Do we have a motion to approve in a second for the approval of claims?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
I think it came from the phone. Can you repeat your name and say who the first and the second were on the phone?
Megan Wild.
Okay, thank you. So this will be a roll call vote. Ms. Lee's.
Mr. O'Connor. Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz. Mr. Smith. Wiles. Eyre. Boyce. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Hampton.
Aye.
Claims are approved.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lee's, and thank you, council. Previously discussed ordinances, council to consider ordinance number 08-03-20, an ordinance regarding text amendments to the adopted Cumberland Farms Industrial Park Plan Development, ordinance number seventy-six-oh-nine-oh-six, including all amendments for property at 21239 Cumberland Road. Ms. Ashelman? On the phone, yes. Any questions for Ms. Ashelman, from the phone or here in the chambers? Okay, we do have a presenter, I think Mr. Andy Wood is also joining us by telephone. Mr. Wood, is there anything that you would like to add tonight?
Nothing new from my presentation two weeks ago. Challenges that go along with planting. Just giving us some suggestions on how we could improve the appearance from the internal access relative we've been having.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Any questions from the phone or here for Mr. Wood? Okay, we need a motion to approve. Mr. O'Connor.
I just have one quick.
Okay.
One construction I'm supposed to. I believe their intent is to begin construction this spring.
Thank you. We need a motion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Davis.
I move to approve ordinance 08-03-20.
There's a second. Great O'Connor seconds. Okay, so we have a motion in a second to approve ordinance number 08-03-20. This is a roll call vote. Ms. Lee's.
Mr. Peterson. Mr. Schwartz. Mr. Smith. Ms. Wiles. Mr. Eyre.
Aye.
Mr. Boyce.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mr. Hampton.
Aye.
Nine, aye, one abstention, the ordinance is adopted.
Eight.
Eight, excuse me.
Eight. Thank you, Ms. Lee's, thank you. Thank you, Amy. And thank you for, you know, doing a little bit different tonight.
I appreciate what you guys do.
Thank you. Moving to miscellaneous number one, council to consider acceptance of a conflict of interest disclosure. Mr. Aaron Smith.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you, Mr. President, this is just a new. Happy to answer any questions that you guys ask.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any questions for Mr. Smith?
Mr. President.
Mr. O'Connor.
I would move that we accept the conflict of interest statement from Mr. Smith.
Second.
We have a first and a second to accept a conflict of interest disclosure. This is a roll call vote. Ms. Lee's.
Mr. Schwartz.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Abstained.
Ms. Wiles. Mr. Eyre. Mr. Boyce.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson. Mr. Hampton.
Aye.
Seven, aye, two abstained. The conflict of interest is accepted.
Thank you, Ms. Lee's. Miscellaneous number two, council to consider resolution number RC-10-20, a preliminary resolution designated an economic revitalization area for the Opus Development Company, LLC, and establishing a public hearing. Mr. Howard.
For those of you that are new on the council, this is a, the abatement is a procedure by which the city can use this as a tool, as an incentive for new development, both asked to assess value, jobs, and payroll. Under the procedure, you have, first have a preliminary resolution, which is before you tonight, and then there is a notice for a public hearing at your next meeting and a confirmatory resolution at that time. This project, the petitioner is Opus Development Company, LLC. They are a regional developer of speculative office space. Mr. O'Connor at the Finance Committee had heard of them and spoke highly of their reputation in the community. They are planning to build this project on the south side of 146th Street, just west of Bergen Boulevard, which is right across from the Music Center and just east of the Sleepy Bear or Hungry Bear, whatever campground that's out there. The project will consist of approximately 157,000 square feet of speculative space at a cost of, they're saying approximately eight million, our resident architect says that'll probably, that number will probably go up depending on what happens on the economy in the next few months. This company, again, it's a speculative space, but they have entered into a letter of intent for 44,000 square feet of that space with a company that is presently a tenant in the Next Spine building. And they are going to be put out of the Next Spine building, they're looking for a place to move in the relatively near future because of Next Spine's growth. This company is moving into, like I say, 44,000 square feet. They now have fifteen employees, so I think we can reasonably anticipate that they expect to grow. The, this is a little bit of a unique situation from now on. Most of the abatements that you see will have a jobs and wages component to them. What part of the mayor's charge is to create jobs and good jobs in the Noblesville area. This project, however, is on land that was owned by Republic Development, still owned by Republic Development, in 2005, and there was an agreement at that time that approved a presumed abatement schedule based upon the square footage. Under that schedule, this project would be eligible for a ten-year declining abatement, which is listed in the second page of your project. And that is what is proposed in this resolution. The, the things have changed a little bit in the world since 2005, when that was beans and corn out there and eggs at ten, and the city was planning on issuing over $20 million of bonds for roads and infrastructure, and assess value and future TIF revenue was the name of the game. We have worked with the landowner at Republic, I've drafted amendment to that 2005 agreement, which while it retained the opportunity for you to approve a graduated abatement schedule not to exceed ten years, it also has a requirement that you may also consider in the length of the abatement and the amount of the abatement, wages, and job creation. Finally, as a speculative development, I know that our Economic Development Department has looked a long time at trying to find vacant space. If a company comes to town, a lot of them don't want to hear that the land is shovel-ready, they want a building that's ready to move into. And we've lost, probably lost a few, we know we've lost a few and maybe more developments because of no available space to lease. So I will, the other thing I should add is upon request of the developer, they were very comfortable, two weeks ago when we drafted this, this resolution, to having this applied to assess value that was assessed by January 2nd, 2021, with the economic issues and uncertainty in the future. The one before you moves that back a year gives them more time to move forward. What will happen with commercial lenders, financial markets, we hope that they will be, by the time Opus seeks their financing, that they'll be ready to go and their lender will be ready to go, but it may take a while for the, the waves to settle a little bit from this crisis that we're in at this time. So I'll stop now and answer any questions. I don't know, is Steve Harden on the line?
Good evening, Mike, yes, Steve Harden's here.
Okay, very good. I'll stop and answer any questions from you, and I imagine Steve, as usual, will have a few comments.
Yeah, first, let's see if there are any questions for Mr. Howard. From the phone.
I'd also add that, go ahead.
Is that Ms. Wiles?
They would in this environment, in that environment, it was our first major TIF area. We are, we had an optimistic developer. That developer did not see 2007 and 2008 downturn on the horizon. In fact, some of the buildings that were out there were not even, didn't have tenants until their ten-year abatement burned off. Any new agreements would obviously have a sunset provision in them. This was about an inch and a half thick development agreement, major, big step. Now that we're going on a, we're going more on a project-by-project basis, don't worry, there will be a sunset provision in all of them, just as there is in this abatement resolution. We have this agreement, and we've negotiated a amendment that, we have the 2005. We have this agreement, and we've negotiated a amendment that, we have the 2005 agreement, and we've negotiated some amendments with that, and the developers has basically approved that. And we anticipate that that agreement will be before you, that amendment to the 2005 agreement will be before you, ahead of the confirmatory resolution granting this abatement at your April 14th meeting. The parcel, the, that agreement included everything that was owned by Republic Development, and they have, that's from 146th South to 69, from Bowden Road East to almost Oleo Road, other than the Town Center. So that agreement still applies to about 80 acres of developable ground. And of that, I think they said there was about 30 acres that would be commercial. The rest of it, for this type of office, distribution, whatever use, the balance of that ground is for retail use and abatement does not apply.
I do have one question, so just to be sure that the.
Right. And that, that new schedule would still have your ability to look at 10 years, five years, seven years, three years of abatement. And it has the schedules that would be on there, the declining schedules, which is not the case today, but was then. But it also points out that you would be in a position to consider jobs, wages, in addition to assessed value and size of the building. So you really would have much more discretion than you have at the, under the old agreement.
Any more questions for Mr. Howard? We can bring in Mr. Harden. Harden, thank you for joining us on the, on the phone.
Thank you for having the meeting tonight. We appreciate that. With me from, from his home, Doug Swain from Opus. He's here on the line as well. Do you have any questions for Doug? We just really want to just say thank you to the, to the city of Noblesville for economic development initiatives. And particularly want to just recognize Sarah Reed, Adrian Murray from the Economic Development Department, Ally Krepsky has been very helpful with her team on some right-of-way and mode improvements. And we thank Mike Howard for his work on the, the abatement for tonight. We don't have anything additional other than. A lease that you're working on?
Sure. Thanks, Steve. And thank you. Good evening, council. Doug Swain with Opus Development Company. We do have a signed letter of intent, like Mr. Howard had stated. He gave a pretty good overview of really where we are. We have a lease document that we were in, are in discussions with and trying to finalize with, with the tenant, and we hope to have that completed shortly.
Thank you, Doug. Doug, I know it's hard to forecast what's going to happen, but what is Opus' view of when you might, if this goes full payment? What is the best estimate that you have right now? I imagine the council might be interested in your view on when you think you might be able to start.
Our current schedule, we are going to, we're continuing forward with some past comments that we received on the site plan, so we are trying to wrap those up by the middle of April. We've got Saxon Design Review Board that we're working on. We hope to have those wrapped up by early May. And we would close on the ground and, and break ground in, call it mid-May probably, would be the way the current schedule is tracking. And we, we anticipate that we will get this completed around the end of the year. You know, it's, it's, everything right now is, you know, if there are other delays that are the result of, you know, this COVID situation, then, you know, those we factor in. But we're, you know, assuming or hoping that we can move forward expeditiously and get the building completed by the end of the year.
Thank you, Doug.
All right, thank you.
That's all we have. Mr. President, thank you very much.
Any questions from council for either Mr. Harden or Mr. Swain? Thank you. Evelyn, do you need, Ms. Lees, I mean, do you need any more identification from them for your?
No, that, that.
You're good.
I can get what I need. Thank you.
All right. So we do need a, a motion to approve Resolution RC-10-20.
Mr. President.
Mr. Davis.
I move to approve Resolution RC-15-20.
Is one zero.
Oh, I'm sorry. RC-10-20.
Second. O'Connor, second.
Okay. Motion from Mr. Davis, second from O'Connor. This is a roll call vote. We have a motion to approve Resolution RC-10-20 and a second. Roll call, Ms. Lees.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Wilds?
Aye.
Mr. Air?
Aye.
Boys?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz? Mr. Hampton?
Aye.
Nine zero. The resolution is approved.
I need a motion to establish a public hearing.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to establish a public hearing for April 14th.
Lloyd, second to that motion.
A motion and a second to establish a public hearing for April 14th. This will again need to be a roll call vote. Ms. Lees.
Mr. Air?
Aye.
Boys?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz? Mr. Smith? Wilds? Mr. Hampton?
Aye.
Nine zero. Public hearing is set.
Public hearing is set. Thank you. Moving now to miscellaneous number three. Council to consider Resolution Number RC-15-20, a resolution waiving certain procedures and formalities during disaster emergency pursuant to IC-10-14-3-17. Ms. Bennett.
Hi, Democratic Council. Lindsey Bennett for the record, City Attorney. I'm here tonight on this resolution that would allow council to waive certain procedures and formalities related to paying any claims in the event that council decides not to hold a regularly scheduled meeting. As you know, we are all dealing with the crisis. And the Indiana Code allows governmental bodies to waive certain procedures and formalities in certain situations. And so this resolution is doing just that, saying that if, then Jeff, as the city's fiscal officer, would have authority to pay the claims at the next regularly scheduled meeting. After the canceled meeting, the claims would appear in front of council for ratification. So anything that Jeff pays will be back before the council, just for a, again, that's only in the event that council actually couns, I'm sorry, council cancels a meeting.
It's hard to say.
Say it three times fast.
Questions for Ms. Bennett on this from the phone or here?
Yes, it hasn't ended yet. The resolution is null and void upon the expiration of the governor's executive order declaring the state public health emergency or expiration of any subsequently declared national or state of emergencies that are issued related to COVID-19. So once this public health crisis has ended and the governor has lifted that executive order, then this will be null and void.
Also to clarify, as long as we continue to hold meetings, even.
Yes. That's correct.
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second Resolution RC-15-20. This is a roll call vote. Ms. Lees.
Ms. Wilds?
Aye.
Mr. Air?
Aye.
Boys?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz? Mr. Schwartz?
Sorry about that. Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Hampton?
Aye.
Nine aye. The resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Ms. Lees. Miscellaneous number four, council to consider Resolution Number RC-16-20, a resolution consenting and approving the declaration of a local emergency and executive orders. Ms. Bennett.
Democratic Council and Lindsey Bennett for the record, City Attorney. This is also related to COVID-19 crisis. Yesterday, the governor issued executive order, basically seizing all non-essential business operations, travel to anything that's non-essential, and prohibiting gatherings of any number of people outside of a single household. In conjunction with the governor's executive order, the, the mayor has issued a declaration of local disaster in accordance with the Indiana Code's emergency. Declaration of local emergency just basically states that the, that there is a local disaster emergency within the city of Noblesville and that the city staff shall further determine what are essential services to be provided by the city. Actions that are necessary to carry out those essential services. And then in accordance with the executive order, asks all residents to stay at home except for performing those activities that are listed in the governor's executive order. And also asks law enforcement to take reasonable measures and actions to carry out the director, the directives in the governor's executive order and calls upon all residents to just basically comply with the governor's order. By law, the declaration of local emergency expires within seven days unless council consents and approves of the declaration of local emergency. So the resolution before you is simply asking for council's consent and approval to that declaration of local. And it will spend until the provisions and the governor's executive order are lifted. Again, and if there's any subsequent orders related to COVID-19, it would last.
O'Connor.
A move that we approve, RC-16-20 is a proposal.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number RC-16-20. This is a roll call vote. Ms. Lees.
Mr. Air? Mr. Boys?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Ms. Smith? Wilds? Mr. Hampton?
Aye.
Nine aye. The resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Ms. Lees. Thank you, Ms. Bennett. Moving to transfer number one, council to consider transfer number TA-12-20, an appropriation transfer in the Cumulative Capital Improvement Fund for a Microsoft software licensing agreement. This is for Mr. Barris, and I believe he's joining us on the phone.
Correct. Sam Barris, OFA staff. Hopefully y'all can hear me all right.
Mm-hmm, we do.
So this item is a physically neutral appropriation transfer within the Cumulative Capital Improvement Fund related to the Microsoft Enterprise Agreement. It sort of has a couple of different components. First off, we're on the backend, we're at the end of a three-year agreement with Microsoft. We've already made the final payment. However, the contract had a true-up provision whereby we look back and see how many licenses we're currently actually using compared to how many were in the original agreement and pay them for, if we're, if we're using more essentially. So the IT department conducted that audit and determined because the city's growth and the employees we've added, the increased licenses means we have a true-up cost of $29,000, which wasn't included in the budget. And then there's a second piece to this, which is there is already $75,000 budgeted for the first year of the new three-year agreement. That amount is essentially too low because of the increased number of licenses that we've determined that we need to pay them for. So in all, there's $43,000 of unbudgeted expenditures related to the enterprise agreement. This resolution handles that by transferring appropriation authority around within the IT department. So it's taking appropriation authority originally for computer hardware and equipment and asking them to cover this increased cost out of that pot of money. And then the other part of this resolution is the $75,000 I mentioned was originally budgeted out of the general fund, pay for the first year of this new agreement. This Cumulative Capital Improvement Fund, we have since looked at it, and it's for a limited set of purposes, and one of those is for information technology software. So in order to provide more flexibility and free up general fund dollars, this resolution transfers $75,000 from contingency within the Cumulative Capital Improvement Fund to help pay for this contract. So happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Barris. Any questions for Mr. Barris? Okay, thank you. We do need a motion. Ms. Wilds? So we have a motion and a second to approve transfer number TA-12-20. This is a roll call vote.
Mr. Boys?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz? Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Wilds? Mr. Air?
Aye.
Mr. Hampton?
Aye.
Nine zero. The transfer is approved.
All right, thank you very much. Council comments on the phone or here? Is that Mr. Air? Mr. Air?
Yes. Well, quick comment, being city government involved in council budgeting, government. For 17 years, we're seeing an unprecedented event going on right now. I would like to thank you and current council president and vice president. After again, and I'm sure you're keeping your social, social distance. I would also like to thank our mayor. He's done an excellent job, us along with our community up to date on what's going on. On with the health. Our staff has done a great job, the administration of also keeping things rolling. City government cannot come to a stop, and I think everyone's doing a good job, and I'd like to say thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Air.
Mr. President?
Ms. Wilds?
Wilds?
I'd like to echo Mr. Air's comments and thank the mayor and the staff for putting together those videos and social media posts for encouraging our residents to do everything that they can to keep mentally healthy. that they can to keep mentally healthy and physically fit during this time. I also want to give a big shout out to the first lady of Noblesville, who did an awesome job with her message today about parents and teachers working through these challenging times, and we will get through all this, but I want to thank the mayor, his family, but especially the staff for the city of Noblesville for all the hard work and effort.
Thank you, Ms. Wiles. Any other council comments? I just have a couple. I do want to thank the entire council and the mayor, Ms. Lees especially. Tonight was a lot more roll calls than hand votes, and it was a different, difficult evening to say, but overall, I think we pulled through it, and I do appreciate everyone for being patient and pushing through this. Thank you very much, council. And on another note, I want to say a big special thanks to all the teachers and educators. If anybody got to see the parades that the teachers went on throughout the neighborhoods, students came out of their houses and stood in their driveways, and while the teachers went by in their cars in a parade, they honked and they cheered and they had signs, that was a great moment for our city that day. It happened this last week, and to see those teachers and the love that they have for their students, and the love that the students have in turn for the teachers, once again, we are Noblesville strong, and that is, that is special when our community comes together like that. So thank you, everyone involved in that effort. Other than that, we need a motion to adjourn, unless there's any more comments. Everybody good? Move to adjourn. We have a move, motion, and a second. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for your patience.